I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education for the School District of Baraboo to order for Monday, February 10th, 2014 with roll call. Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. McNeven.
Here.
Mr. Mirry.
Here.
Mr. Mortimer.
Here.
Ms. Riley.
Here.
Mr. Bedrow.
Here.
And Hodeck here. Continuing with the pledge, flags behind the column. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Brings us to the portion of the agenda for the approval of the minutes of the last meeting of January 27th, introducing a motion for that.
Second.
Motion by Bedrow, second by Riley, in discussion. During the discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The extension from Mr. Wardman brings us to correspondents, of which I have none. There was a highlighted correspondence from the district administrator in your packet. I don't know if you want to highlight.
Yeah, I'd love to just highlight those four pieces. We received information from the Wisconsin School Counselor Association that the Spark Award is being presented to North Freedom School for their work. Matthew, John Davies and the staff, thank you for putting that together. Kristin Maschek will be presenting at the International Conference on PBIS in Chicago coming up here this spring. And we found out that some of her who's PBIS data will be traveling to Washington DC and representing the work of Wisconsin. And last but not least, Craig has been appointed to a 13-member board for the Wisconsin Teacher Retirement. So, those are the highlights.
Any board members with correspondence?
Yeah, I just have one. I just received notification from Fred Clark's office about a public hearing that they're going to be having on Wednesday. It's a revised bill. What it is, I still even had a chance to read it, but it's the AB 379 School Accountability Bill. So, it's the latest version. And so, and I may even go there and at least observe some of the testimony, may even give some testimony myself, so. But that's my correspondent.
Could you share that with us, times and date, times and location?
Sure. Yeah. They don't even know the location yet. That's... They just announced it, so.
Most consistent.
Yep.
Any other board members with correspondence? Hearing nine, I believe there's any other administrative? Like to move on to public viewpoints? Is there anyone here for public viewpoints tonight? Any public viewpoints? Any public viewpoints? Hearing none brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Staff and Student Recognition. And due to the weather from the last board meeting on the 27th, some of what we were going to go through tonight, we were hoping to do that night, but we're pleased and honored to have with us tonight a bunch of our staff and students for recognition. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ritzenthaler for that.
Yeah, we have Damian Beth here from the high school with some high school students who participated, I believe, in the first academic decathlon. We can have all of you just come up here to the front. And Damian, I'll have you do the introductions of students and perhaps you can share out a little bit about the event.
Yeah, a little pass around and hand it around. Kind of our highlights from the year. Before this summer, Lori had passed on some information to Scott Lotsi, his GT Coordinator at the high school, about possibly trying to start up an academic decathlon team here at the high school. And I kind of caught wind of it through Scott. And immediately jumped at the chance and asked if I could be involved in it because I was scared to think about it, but 20 years ago this year, I was in their shoes doing this exact same thing for the first time. Yeah, over in Reedsburg, I loved everything about it. And it was a really cool experience for me when I was a student and I was hoping that at some point we would have the opportunity here. And so, we kind of scrambled, put together a team in the spring. And the way that the structure of the academic decathlon works is a little bit different than the traditional, sometimes academic competitions like our team or Science Olympia or something like that where this one, this, the way the format of the competition works is it's designed to get a variety of students. It's sorted by GPAs and you can only have up to nine people on your team, of which six of them are scored. And there's, so there's a honors division, a scholastic division, a varsity division. And except for our first competition, it was open in November. I think as well as it was, we got a team kind of put together, invited and asked for a first year on how to do this by about the end of September. So, we had about five, six weeks to put together. We got our materials in a binder, it was about three inches thick. And we went off to porridge for our local competition. And there was 122 different teams in the state that competed in the top 60, got to advance to the regional competition. And we ended up 31st out of the 122 teams that were there. And so, we got to go to the regional competition and then we hit the winter sports season. It got to be a little bit tricky to try and get people together. And then we went up to Stevens Point and competed. And we pretty much stayed in the same spot out of the safety team. So, we didn't advance the state, but the kids ever involved, I think had a pretty good experience or excited, had a fun time up at Stevens Point. What makes it an academic decathlon is the students are tested in seven different tests at the regional level or the local level. And then if you advance, they add on three more things. So, they, like this year's topic was World War I. So, there were social studies, questions about World War I. There was some science stuff that focused on biology and genetics, mathematics, econ, language and literature. Let's see, I don't see here, lots of music and art at the local level. So, it was a good breadth of subjects. And then once they advanced to the regional level, those same seven topics were asked again, but then they also had to prepare a three and a half minutes prepared speech, do a one and a half to two-minute approach to speech, conduct a five-minute interview with community and volunteer people up there, as well as do an essay, that was a 15-minute essay on the book, The Sun Also Rises this year. And we did, surprising them well up at the regional competition. As you can see from the sheet here, we had a number of students who scored great, top three in their category, their subject, or overall at both the regional and at the local competition. So, behind me are six of the competitors that we had this season. Belton Roth, Caitlin Randall, Hannah Shumway, Jasmine Place, Ben Goodrow and Kevin Solen. And the ones that couldn't make it tonight, Cam Tracy came and joined us for regionals. Todd Fiebig and Zach Souls. They both had other commitments to make it tonight. So, we're already on the reboot trail for next year. Get a team put together and hopefully get ahead sooner this year.
I would be very interested in what any or each of you had experienced as what we would call the hail mary pass of the academic decathlon. That, were you able to work together to get an answer or did you have to work individually?
It was individual competition. Well, we all were able to work with each other and give each other advice.
Like, we did it actually a lot different than other schools tend to do it. We actually each picked out a certain subject that each of us would be best at and then taught each other. So, we really bonded as like a team up there.
Lot of late evening study sessions in October.
Well, I just want to commend you that your futures will be fulfilled because the earlier you learn that cooperation and sharing provides an answer that no individual can come up with, the better you'll do. And thank you so much for representing Baraboo School District.
Damian, thank you very much for taking a new opportunity and making it happen. And thank you, students, for your willingness to participate.
And being so passionate about it and putting in extra hours, because you know you have nothing else to do.
Right, right. Yeah, just a couple hours early in the morning.
You have such a positive experience and you want our students to share that as well. So, thank you very much for your willingness. I've troubled this many at the same time, so I won't attempt to put them on. Congratulations. We're proud of you that you represented Baraboo and again, taking the extra time and effort to do that yourself. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Actually, I want to share on behalf of Kevin, he doesn't know this, but since last spring, every spring I have the opportunity to pick out superintendent's art awards. And this one I've been hanging on to, I just haven't wanted to let it go. You've probably seen it hanging in my office. I just think it's a wonderful piece of art. And as long as Kevin was going to be here tonight, I also wanted to recognize him for his artistic talent as well. And I'm going to give it back to him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Erin and Sue in regards to special mercy.
Yeah, Chris.
Sure.
Can I have her, Lori? Yes.
We're really fortunate at West, at the kindergarten center, to have Sue Paulson and Erin Verhagen work with our staff. We don't have a big staff, but we do have needs like any other building with regard to teaching of literacy and math and all of our subjects. And Sue has worked with half of our teachers and Erin Verhagen has worked with the other half. And they've just been instrumental in our school in helping us continually look at how we're teaching literacy, how we're meeting the individual needs of our kids, what interventions we're putting together, how are we using data to drive our planning and the teaching within our building. And they've really just been so important to us in helping us continue to ratchet up the rigor in our teaching in kindergarten at West. They've also helped us in a variety of ways, in the coaching mode, not only helping in the classroom assisting teachers, but even more importantly, helping teachers develop more of their own abilities and continue to help them find answers to different challenges that they face in their teaching. And that's really the essence of coaching. And Sue and Erin have been just outstanding working with us at West. And one little plug for Erin, she's also helped our BELK, our 4K teachers, her and Deb Benson have teamed to do a lot of great things, bringing some aspects of kindergarten, some of them into 4K where it's appropriate and however it can fit for our four-year-olds. So, Erin's been really helpful that way, too. So, just on behalf of the West and the BELK teams, we just wanted to say thank you to the great work, for the great work of Erin Verhagen and Sue Paulson. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
I would just add, because of their work, you know, we are seeing noted growth in both of those areas. And it is because of a vacancy that these two young ladies have been taking on extra duties with coaching. And, you know, Erin also serves as our district reading specialist and they're very passionate about their work. In the past three years I've worked with them, I see them as essential partners in guaranteeing our literacy curriculum instruction. They do so much work with our individual teachers on reviewing their data, looking at areas for growth. And we have a strong curriculum in place now. We're really recognizing that, though. So, thank you so much for what you do.
And when we talk about high-quality professional development, you have to see these ladies in action because it is that and I've had the opportunity to do that as well.
Yeah, I just would like to reiterate some of the what's already been said. I had the opportunity earlier this year to visit one of our elementarys and to observe some professional learning, but it was particularly something around literacy and the work that you're doing. I was amazed with the tools and the thought that went into it. And so, I really believe that our literacy is going to be rising as a result of the work that you're doing. Really appreciate that.
I would just add to that, please let us know as a board how we can continue to support these efforts that are making such important inroads with our children.
I'm sure they would appreciate it if we could fill that vacancy.
That's all he needs to hear.
We'll hear about that in the next meeting. Thank you, Sue.
Next up on the agenda under reports, we have Principal Gannell from the Jack Young Middle School along with Sue Groban from the middle school to talk to us about the impact of the new classroom furniture and some students as well.
I brought the experts with me.
All right.
You remember way back when, the beginning of the school year, it seems like a lifetime ago in some respects, and just like yesterday and others, we had the chance to pilot some of what's called flexible furniture at the middle school, mainly due to the work of Martha and a courageous group of teachers who were willing to not only house the furniture in their rooms, but also experiment with some things in terms of curriculum and grouping of students. And they had the chance to try that furniture out for a period of about six weeks. And following that trial period, we made purchases on furniture at the middle school. And we tried to be strategic in terms of the classrooms that we put it in and get multiple subject areas and multiple grade levels so we could really get a feel for how to make that type of furniture work with our students and our staff. And I brought some students and staff tonight who can tell you a lot more about the classroom level impact of that furniture.
Sue Groban, I brought, as John said, I brought the experts. So, I love the furniture. Thank you so much because it's really made a big difference in my classroom. Kind of fits my style of teaching and the kids can maybe address that. But I'll let them talk, they'll introduce themselves and then they each have a little bit that they're going to talk about and then I can come back and answer any questions you have.
Yeah, well, my name is Jacob and I'm in this class. And like, I'll be talking about like the tables. Then our tables in the classroom, like, they're a lot, they're really good at mobility. So, like, when we're all like collaborating and stuff, like for our labs, we, like, then like when we need to go and like test information, we can easily remove them instead of like, you know, lifting up the desk and moving and putting around. So, that gets easier for that, too. And then there's a lot of your workspace because of those little desks, you didn't really have much workspace for yourself. But with this one, it's a lot more workspace for us and the labs, so.
I'm Claire and I will be talking about how the chairs are beneficial to us. And the chairs are very good in our classroom because Ms. Groban is always moving around the classroom when she's teaching. So, that way we can keep our attention focused on her and not have to like crank her head every time she moves. And another reason that they're very beneficial is we work in teams of fours. So, when somebody is like talking in our group, we can kind of like spin instead of, again, like turning our whole desk around and facing them.
Hi, I'm Connor and I'll be speaking about the, how comfortable our chairs are. Chairs are much more comfortable than like the hardened chairs that we used to sit in because like, you'd be sitting in the chairs all day and then you'd have to like stand up and be sore when you're so sore. You just don't want to walk to next class. It's much easier to move like back, so like try and like move in to your desk and like move out. You don't have to make so much racket. You just kind of slide in and slide out. And it's a lot, it's like a lot nicer to have more room for like your legs. Because before in the old desks, your knees, like your knees wouldn't be able to fit under the desks.
That's just you. Well, the quick question on that, obviously you, you're probably going to have more of an issue than many of us because of the height. Is it, are they adjustable?
No, it's not like a problem anymore.
I was saying, is the tables and the chairs adjustable as far as the height?
We did not go with the adjustable ones because, first of all, it was kind of a distraction because the kids would adjust constantly all out. So, that was kind of decided not to go with that. But just the fact that it's not one piece, the chair is separate from the table. And it seems to be that it's just, we kind of chose the height between. So, Connor's legs can fit under really nice, but I don't think there's a problem for the difference height here. It's kind of the right fit.
Sure.
For all. The one thing that, and so you might not be aware, the chairs and tables are on wheels. So, that's when they were talking about how easy it was to move around and it wasn't that clunky and moving. And we move a lot in my classroom. It's just kind of my style. I have the kids group and regroup and turn some ways. Sometimes we're just in pairs, sometimes we're groups of four. And having that furniture be able to move however we're moving really helps because we can take those transitions even faster and really is a benefit. And as I said, I teach from probably four different boards in my room and I'm constantly moving around. So, the kids can, and I'm real big on respect. You look at the speaker. And so, it's really easy for them to turn and pay attention to where I'm instructing from and then turn back to their group. And this kind of works real nice. So, again, we really appreciate it and are using it. So, thank you.
I think one of the benefits, too, of having done the trial was to give us the opportunity to really see what works with certain groups of students and certain subject areas in terms of the types of furniture we wound up purchasing in the end. You know, I was amazed at how many choices we had to make in terms of the furniture. But what it allowed us to do is really tailor it to that particular instructor and what they want to do in their classroom. So, the sixth grade furniture isn't the same as the eighth grade furniture. Sue spent a lot of time thinking about the dimensions of the table and how that would impact collaboration. So, it's not a one-size-fits-all type of furniture and we found that to be very beneficial. I know sometimes when you hear, well, we can turn, it seems like, well, what's, you know, that's not that big of a deal. But I think with class time being a premium, what it winds up doing is really preserving instructional minutes so kids can focus on learning.
The great poet, T.S. Eliot, talked about objective correlatives. So, this is a physical thing that represents something that's very hard to understand. And movable furniture allows our students to configure, reconfigure with their teachers, with their peers. And there is nothing more important than understanding and supporting the ability to be flexible, to learn in a variety of different ways. And I'm very happy to hear about how this has supported these educational objectives. It's not fluff. It's definitely not fluff.
And I don't know if you've ever seen any clean bag from your custodial staff, but you know, what they've told us is they love it in terms of ease of cleaning and moving furniture. It's just, it saves them a lot of time in the long run as well.
Thank you. Brings us to B under reports, which is the group assessment. We have Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Smansky with us tonight. Mr. O'Brien met with Building, Browns and Transportation Committee previous to this meeting. So, at this point, I guess we'd like to share with the rest of the board the report that you have in front of you. And Dan and Al, if you want to explain to them what you've got.
Sure. Back in, I think it was November, boarded VIX, where we should have gone with MSA to do a group audit, or four sections of roof that we had at East GLW and Middle School. The board said, yes, we should go ahead with that. So, Al was able to do a study. Unfortunately, right around the time that we had approved MSA to go ahead and move the study, Mother Nature kicked in. It snowed, it got cold and it hasn't let up ever since. So, we got to blend the winter on Al. So, we were able to get up there and do a little bit of a group assessment and kind of, you know, Al's had a lot of involvement with the roofs over the years. He's got a great history with what we've done. So, we've shared with Al some of the repairs that we've gone over. Basically, at this time, we're recommending just replacing the four sections roof, the two at East, the Middle School and GLW roof. If you look at our five-year plan, we had called for at GLW and the two section roof at East, those are ballasted. The five-year plan, we called out to do a folia here, basically do a complete tear-off and then do a folia here roof. At this time, we're recommending going with a ballasted, replace a ballasted roof with another ballasted roof. The primary reason is materials have gotten better and insulation techniques have greatly improved. So, we have installations that are repaired, repair pits and two sections of seaming. The way they join them seams together is much better than what it used to be. Al's talked about Firestone and Carlisle, which are both manufacturers, it's fires as well as roofing contractors. They'll kind of tell you that you could expect to get 30 to 35 years out of a ballasted roof. Would, you know, if we replaced it and if you gave us to go ahead, we would get a 20-year warranty with those four sections of roof. So, we could expect 30 to 35 years.
Can you, as long as you're talking about Carlisle, the question came up at previous board meetings and also at the committee level in regards to the white versus the black roof.
We got a letter from Carlisle basically saying, if you went with white roofs, it benefits you in the summer. If you go with black roofs, it benefits you in the winter. But if you look at Wisconsin specifically where we are, there's more heating degrees days, which is how many days you have below 55 degrees versus cooling degrees days, which is our temperatures above 55 degrees. So, by going with the white roof, we cool less than what we eat. So, the benefits of going with the white roof are not outweighing going with a black roof because you get a greater benefit in the winter. So, the savings that you would get by going with the white roof in the summer would be as great as what you would lose by heating in the winter.
Is that, would that be true even like this winter unless we have the snow up there? I mean, even looking at the Jack Young Middle School where you couldn't even really, have we even been able to do a full observation because of the conditions? So, if we have a bunch of snow up there, do we even get the benefit of the black roof? Yeah.
Well, if you had a white roof, you'd have even more snow. I mean, we do, you would have some melt-off. I mean, your roofs are generating heat. So, I mean, your snow isn't as great, what's on the roof isn't as great as what's on the ground.
Sure. So, there would be some.
Now, if you had the white roof, you'd still, you'd have more snow on your roof. So, you'd have a waiting, a longer heating time in the winter.
In the report, you talked about GLW and East. Jack Young Middle School, we're not doing or don't need to do that at this point?
No, that's one of the recommendations.
That is one of the recommendations.
To replace the ballasted roof with another ballasted roof.
Okay.
So, what do you need from the board? Just a motion to go out for bids?
Correct.
Voodoo proof. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Al.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Brings us to C, Referendum Communication Update. The board has been receiving timelines throughout the process. Mr. Mortimer, I think you received them in your basket, your mail basket.
Just briefly, we have three informational nights set and I believe that that is open to all of our board members and we will have representatives from EUA and CG Schmidt there. We have North Freedom School, March 4th, East, March 6th, and Baraboo High School, March 11th. And those will be evening sessions. People can come and go and ask questions and pick up materials. We also have scheduled two building tours for each of our buildings and I provided that list of dates. And I believe our newspaper will also be highlighting those. And then Martha and I have been working together with the newspaper and they are going to provide the, an eight and a half by 11 back sheet as an insert. And there are about 4,000 subscriptions and then 5,000 shopper stoppers. And then you want to talk about the poster boards?
Sure, we've got final drafts of the poster boards. One will be kind of a general outline of what the referendum entails, the construction timeline. And the second poster board, which will be different at each school, will be the drawing of where the work is going to take place in the school. So, I'm working on getting those ordered and getting them up at the schools. We'll have at least a big one of each of those at each school. And then probably the middle school and high school will have a couple smaller ones in some other places, just so wherever traffic is high, people are seen as they come through.
Yeah, the summer sheets don't include any details yet. It's kind of a big picture view. I have been going around to the staff meetings and just updating our teachers. And a few questions have come up. So, again, we're just reiterating that these renditions and posters are kind of at a high level right now.
I really think it's important to ensure that whatever the visual explanation is doesn't focus on the stuff as much as it... doesn't focus on the stuff as much as it focuses on what are the key elements of safety for our children, structural soundness, consistent with what the board has approved. So that parents and other community members understand it's not just a construction project, it's absolutely integrated and consistent with the, what the board has approved towards safety and maintenance.
And you'll see that in the building drawings that we have. The other thing is the first postcard that Kit had on her communication timeline has been approved and is at the printer. And as soon as I find out when it's going out in the mail, I can let you guys know. We've made sure, there were a few people we heard from at the last mailer that they didn't get it. So Econ Print has tried to pinpoint that route or whatever it was to make sure that we're really hitting 99% of our district hopefully. So that should be going out soon as well.
The poster board easel setup that you're talking about, do you've got, is there two different sizes? Is that what I heard you say?
We actually have three different sizes. There's a 30 by 40, and then two smaller ones. I don't know the dimensions off the top of my head.
Well, I think it would be beneficial, not speaking for Mr. McNeven or any other board members, to go to speak to other groups. But if I'm going to go speak to the Golden Gate, if I could have just a kit that I pick up that has, I don't need something that's 40 by 30.
Yep.
Well, if you're speaking to Golden Gate, you.
We are planning on, we are planning on having the general one up in the administration building. But yes, we're thinking of ordering just a few extra smaller ones.
Make sure that Mr. McNeven gets a 40 by 80.
Yeah, I said it out loud.
Thank you for the update.
Will we be purchasing the actual stands as well?
We're going to be working with principals to see what we might already have on hand to help us with that. So we don't have to put too much cost into those, but we'll figure it out.
Okay. I mean, I see we already have some informational tables being set up. Are those going to be ready for those?
Um.
This week?
I will check. I know it's, I think it's only a two or three day turnaround. So if I can get them ordered tomorrow.
Okay.
If not, we can definitely have at least paper versions on the table. But yes, we'll have them hopefully by the end of the week.
Okay.
Do we have to pay for all this stuff? Or is that part of their contract?
These things we do have to pay for because they're direct cost of ours.
Looking to the rest of the board, Mr. Mearing has put his name to a number of events to plan the table. If the rest of the board can look at that timeline again of master activities throughout the district and please find an opportunity to sign up for one or more of those, at least one, so that we can have a good representation there.
Yes, I do have a timeline.
Okay. Anything else? Appreciate the update. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Continuous School Improvement. And we are honored to have with us tonight Dr. Mesner, who is the district science coach. And we are going to learn about the next generation science standards and coaching.
So Crystal and Lori asked me to be here with you tonight to let you have a little bit more understanding of the next generation science standards and also to give you some background on what I've done this year and what I hope to do in the future. So as Kevin mentioned, I'm a science coach this year, part-time. I'm also teaching seventh grade science. I've been in the district. This is my 25th year. I taught in the last five or eight years before that. So I've been around a long time. And these next generation science standards are the best thing I've ever seen in science. I talked to all the principals over the course of this year and they could sense my enthusiasm for these. I've always been very passionate about teaching science, but these things tie everything together. It's a vision of what we want science education to be like for the next generation. So my take-home message number one is that yes, these are really good because they combine the three things that you really need to have in science. In the past, we've just taught science content. What do we need to know about science? Well, these science standards integrate the science practices, which I'll get to in a little bit, and cross-cutting concepts. So it's more than just one thing about what science is. It combines three things. It's actually, so if you look at the nextgenerationscience.org, this is what you're going to see, part of it. It's really, really busy. We have the three, what we call the three dimensions, the science and engineering practices, they even have them color-coded, are blue, the disciplinary core ideas. These are the things that we normally think of when we think of science, about chemical reactions, for example. The cross-cutting concepts over here in green are things that go across all the science disciplines. Energy and matter can be talked about in biology and chemistry and physics and earth science and engineering. And what I really like about these standards are these performance expectations. You're not just asking students to understand how substances react chemically, but they need to develop molecular models of reactants and products to support the explanation that atoms and therefore math are conserved in a chemical reaction, for example. It takes all three of these and ties them together into what kids should be able to do, not just what kids should know. So, science practices are these kinds of things here, asking questions and defining problems. The ones that I've really focused on with the staff this year in my coaching position are developing and using models, constructing explanations and designing solutions, and engaging in argument for evidence. Because when you do those, all the other kinds of things combined. So these are the things that scientists do. And these are the disciplinary core ideas that we normally think of when we think of science, life science, physical science, earth and space science. And for the very first time, engineering is included. We've never had those in science before in our science standards. So we're going to have to teach some engineering. Cross-cutting concepts, this is what I think is the real beauty of these. And the way I wish I had been taught, I was taught to be a biologist, and I didn't understand that energy in biology was the same as energy in physics was the same as energy in chemistry was the same as energy in earth science. I really wish somebody had tied that all together for me. And that's what we're charged to do as science teachers now, is to make that really explicit to the kids and get them to understand the whole big picture of how the world works, not separate it into all the little silos that we've done in the past. So we want an integrated vision for kids. And a lot of educational research that's been done over the last 20 years since the last standards have come out, has shown that if you have kids do the science practices to learn the core ideas with the cross-cutting concepts, they'll learn them a lot better. And I was involved in some of that research when I went to Madison for my PhD. And it's amazing how much the kids learn when they actually do science and are scientists. So I like this little diagram here showing that the strands together make the stronger rope rather than just one strand separately. So this is a really different way of teaching kids. And it does have connections between the Poppin Core and the NGSS. The same people helped to write these. And again, color-coded, you can see the purple with math and the science, a lot of developing models in math, and we also have developing models in science, ELA and science, a lot of communicating information and the intersection of all three especially focuses on engaging an argument from evidence, backing your claims with evidence. So there are definite connections explicitly outlined right there. Okay, so if you ever, ever want to talk to me about, more about next generation science standards, just let me know because I can go on and on and on. Any questions.
She can fit any timeframe.
Yeah.
This just isn't a one-day conference, is it?
Wait till the end, right, right. We'll wait to the end for questions. You did get a background on paper in your board packets of where they came from and all kinds of things like that. So if you ever have questions, that's as short a version as I've ever seen anybody ever give background about this year. So, main idea number two, much work's been done already in our district to implement the NGSS. So I'm going to go through here, professional development. I worked with the high school and middle school teachers last summer. We sat down and sorted all the disciplinary core ideas and figured out what we were going to teach when. That's changing a little bit as we get more into these. I did professional development with the K-12 curriculum committee, really working on modeling and argumentation in science. And then all of the elementary teachers that teach science have gotten a quick background in all the principles also. I've been working on developing curriculum. I've gone through the middle school and high school curriculum. What are we doing? What do we need to do to implement these standards? I rewrote the whole seventh grade curriculum because I'm really familiar with that since I've checked that for 25 years, and aligned it to the standards. I found resources, the investigating and questioning with science and technology for sixth grade and eighth grade science. And we did a visit, John went a couple weeks ago, in the sixth grade and eighth grade science teachers to see what it was like in the classroom. And they really, really, the other teachers really liked it. So we're looking about maybe adopting that for next year. But it's an excellent curriculum that actually is already aligned with the standards.
Just quickly, what is IQWST?
It's investigating and questioning with science and technology.
Okay.
And it was written by the main writer for, the lead writer for the physical science standards. So it's already aligned with the standards because he did both those things. And then I wrote the essential learning targets for middle school science. Now biology, we were going to wait for biology, but the biology science teachers were so excited about NGSS that they wanted to jump right into it. So this year, we've been working on doing as much as we can now. And I've been finding the resources and they've been doing what they can in their classroom this year to change over to this vision of science, of teaching science. So I started the conversation on what to do with physical and earth science in the high school. We really have not had earth science required for anybody in the future. And these standards are for everyone, all students. So all students should have earth science in the high school. And we've had before this year, a credit or a half credit of astronomy that was an elective. And that was it for earth science. So we need to add some earth science in here. I wrote a month-long unit for second grade at Abe and went over and talked to those teachers today. And they said the kids just loved doing it. And they were just amazed at the writing that took place after they did the science to go along with it. I really love this coaching job. I've been working with the TIs at the middle school to help them teach argumentation in science, been in the classrooms with that, finding resources for them, working with the middle school science and biology teachers, figuring out some effective teaching methods. Because it's really different to teach this way. It takes a lot of coaching, a lot of work to get to the point where kids develop their own models to explain phenomena and they can argue those models based on evidence with the rest of the classroom. So as much coaching as I can do could be great. I've been working a lot at the state and the national level. Number two, I've been selected as curator for the National Science Teachers Association, one of 50 people in the country. And I'm evaluating resources. And those resources are going to be put up on the NSTA website. So since I was selected for that, NSTA sent me to Charlotte, North Carolina for their convention. They'll be sending me to Boston in the spring. And I've been meeting with the authors of the standards and they've been training us on the standards. And so I've just had some excellent, excellent professional development, development myself. And I really understand these. Lots of webinars, our state science teachers, CISA II. And so, you know, all of this background makes me one of the people in the state that understands these more than anybody else.
What is CISA II on the CISO?
I went to, I got familiar with the person that is their science and math person because we're both curators. Wisconsin had four people out of the 50 that were chosen from our states that were well represented. Kevin Anderson of CISA II is one of those people. And so he was giving, I went to one last week that he did on SLOs for teacher effectiveness, aligned with the standards. So he's been helping a lot too.
Yeah.
So because of this background, I'm the person to help figure out how to continue to implement this. I want to implement the curricula in the middle school next year, the IQWST. Lots of coaching will be needed, as I mentioned before, since it's a different way of teaching. We want to try and figure out what we're going to do with our science and physical science at the high school and continue to work with biology because, like I mentioned, they're very enthusiastic about this. Elementary, it depends on time. I'm still in the classroom half the day. So I've got the rest of the day to work with everybody. And that's a lot, overwhelming sometimes. I want to align the curriculum, K-12, and the assessments, they're just starting to think nationally about what are these assessments going to look like. I've seen a couple examples. There's not anything, well, that's been written out there, but it's not going to be multiple choice tests. It'll include some kind of performance assessment. The latest I heard from DPI is that it won't be smarter balance for science. It might be a consortium of neighboring states that will write our state assessments for science when WKCE goes away. So we'll see how that happens. But we want to be prepared for that. So, importance of my position. When I was here last spring, I committed to two and a half years, hoping to retire after that. So I've got two and a half years to do this. I'm working really hard. If it can be full-time next year, that would be a real plus. Teachers that I've worked with so far have been very, very positive of working with me, asking me for resources, asking me into the classroom. So, you know, I've worked well with the people that I've worked with so far, and they like that. Vast majority of districts don't have somebody that understands the NGSS as much as I can have, I do. So it's really unique to have me here in this district. New state science assessments are coming. They're not going to be like what we've had before. We don't know what they're going to be like. But no testing company is going to develop anything for science testing that is not based on NGSS. Every testing company is going to be looking to those and saying, that's what we're going to base our assessments on.
Is that nationwide that you're doing?
Well, that, I listened to some webinars from an assessment convention that was in DC in September. And Shelley Lee from DPI was there. And she said, all the major testing companies were there. And everybody was saying, no, we're not going to make any tests that aren't aligned with NGSS. So, yeah, nationwide, I bet you that's going to happen. Even though there will be states that will not adopt NGSS.
I have a lot of questions, but I will probably save those. Maybe I have to go for that one-day webinar.
Yeah, that's fine. You can come on over.
Yeah.
And I decided to finish with this quote from Ryan Reiser. He's another person that wrote the IQWST materials for the sixth and eighth grade, works at Northwestern, been involved in the standards. He said, "Many teachers will need extensive support, not just in learning about NGSS, but in learning, trying out, and getting feedback on what it means to teach with this vision." It's a big vision, lots to do. And I would love to continue coaching for a while to help the teachers get to this vision.
We are so fortunate to have you here in our district.
As we've all just indicated, thank you so much for being who you are and doing what you're doing. It seems to me that NGSS is transitioning from facts.
Right.
To figuring out.
Ideas, yes.
To understanding the context.
Right.
And the pieces and how they fit together. And I can think of no one more qualified to help our teachers and our students recognize that experiential learning is the most fundamental way any human being or any animal learns by doing. And thank you for providing that basis for us.
Very quick PowerPoint. You did go and talk about second grade at Abe. You wrote a unit. Have they done the unit already?
They've done parts of it, yeah, as much as they've had time for.
Are they going to be doing some more?
Not at this point. I'm still trying to figure out the best way to work with elementary to train them a little bit before they actually take it into the classroom. After I did a presentation with all the elementary teachers, Tracy Crouch, she said, oh, would you help us do this right before Christmas? And so I.
Sure.
Got some things together. And so, yeah, still trying to figure out how I can get with them, to train them first. The timing is hard sometimes, but.
And, you know, and again, the board fully supports this actions. And, you know, sometimes with the state, things are very unusual. You know, if we have to have a resolution to support this even more fully, I believe that our board would do that. And we'll discuss that. I don't want to speak for the other board members. But we are behind this. And again, I believe that, yes, you're right. This is the way to go. This is the way to go. As far as you're concerned and what you're seeing, curriculum materials and everything else is getting, even though there's only seven states that have fully adopted the standards as far as the stamp of approval, there isn't any new material, credible material that's coming out curriculum-wise that's anything but NGSS, as far as you're seeing.
Right. People, at this point, people are working on developing curricula to teach NGSS.
Because the standards are so rich.
Right.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
I spend my days in Madison, meeting with employers. And this is what they're asking for, whether it's kids straight out of their high school that they're hiring, whether they're hiring two-year associate degrees, whether those kids are going on to four-year degrees. This is what our, this is what our manufacturers, this is what our employers are asking for. I'm thrilled to see the engineering aspect. Wish that had been available when I was a student.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
And next up on the agenda, we have our online learning coordinator, who's going to talk to us about the online learning options for the district.
Hi, it's nice to see you all again. My name is Shelley Gilmore and I was hired in the fall to be the online coordinator for the district. And I wanted to come back after we had ended our first semester to share with you some information about how we are moving forward with the program and to talk about the enrollments that we've had so far in online. In your board packet, you have a document called the Online Learning Services Plan and Resource Guide. A group of wonderful staff at Jack Young Middle School and I sat together and they helped kind of create how we wanted this to look. It is modeled after the gifted and talented standards that are used to share information with the community. And we thought having a similar format would make things very uniform. So within this document, we have really taken a look at what information was already out there and what information we thought would be very important for our community members to know. So as we go through the document, the introduction, when you look from pages one through three, is really taking a look at the mission and the vision of not only the school district, but of the online programming and where we want to move to. When we take a look at pages four through six, we looked specifically at the international standards for online learning, K-12. So we referenced INACOL, which is the international organization, and really picked apart what it is that we're doing. Baraboo is an affiliate member with Wisconsin eSchool Network, which means that we have a wonderful support system and director in place to help drive our focus, to help us strategically plan where we want to go. And our director is John Jacobs, and I hope that many of you were able to hear him present at the school board presentation that was going on. But I just want to extend to you that he is very willing to come and talk to you if you would like more detail on what the strategic plan is. But you can read through the different standards that we have. We've tied it to our vision and how we want to move forward. Our basic goal with Wisconsin eSchool Network is that we really want to make sure that we are providing the best possible coursework curriculum for our students, that we have local control so that we can accommodate the needs of our individual learners and do it in a way that's cost-effective for the district. So, you know, that's really the meat and potatoes of Wisconsin eSchool Network. In addition to that, we also use Odysseyware as a vendor. And so part of my job is to work with our guidance team and our administrative team so that we can find and recognize what our students' needs are and we can enroll the student in the appropriate course. So again, pages four through six kind of focus on those standards and the goals that we have with the organization. When you look in pages seven through 10, it is a focus on kind of what we really do, kind of how the program runs and operates. There are some specific guidelines for Jack Young Middle School. There are some specific guidelines for Baraboo High School. And those are always a work in progress. So as we take what was out there, we're working to kind of make sure that that meets what we're doing right now. And, you know, are we meeting the needs of all of our learners? Are we able to go through a process of enrolling students that isn't so cumbersome that it takes two weeks to get things rolling? But yet, we want to make sure that we've got some policies in place so that we're accurately placing students. So that's what you can expect to take a look at in those pages. When we get to pages 11 through 13, it's a list of job descriptions. So there's a listing for the online coordinator, which is my position, the online instructor, a coach, and also a registrar. And so I'll be working with Craig Hubble to make sure that we align those job descriptions to how other job descriptions look that are on the Human Resources website. We have some information about roles and responsibilities. So not only in my position, but as a parent of an online student, what are your responsibilities? As a student, what are your responsibilities? And any other people that kind of play a part. Sometimes we need a school psychologist to come in and play a part, a school guidance counselor and administrator. So those responsibilities are kind of mapped out to show you, you know, what needs to be in place to make students successful. There is a listing of current staff. So you'll see we have 11 teachers who are currently online instructors for part of their day, in addition to any of the student services staff that we have, both at Jack Young and at the high school. And then we get to pages 19 through 21. And those are the forms that we have in place right now. And again, those are ever-evolving and changing as we are learning about the different grading procedures and how we want to, you know, make changes again in either of our schools. You know, right now, Jack Young is standards-based grading, so we want to put some things in place because all of our coursework gets shared out as a percentage. And so we want to make sure that we are able to communicate with parents so that they understand how that percentage relates to that type of grading. So again, the document is a work in progress, but I am very passionate that we would like to have something later on this semester developed so that you can improve policy and have that ready to go. So that's that booklet. Questions? Yes?
I just was very impressed in reading through it in detail and the comprehensiveness of how the pieces fit together, both from a student perspective, from a parent perspective, from teacher administrator, as well as the integration into the international standards and the local standards. And as I say, I was very impressed with the work. Thank you for doing what you do.
My pleasure.
Shelley, what's the breakdown or guesstimate on percentages of kids that are using our online programs for credit retention versus, or credit recovery, I should say, not retention, but credit recovery versus expansion or taking a program that isn't offered within our buildings?
I actually brought some data with. So we have, we had 238 enrollments total in the first semester. And 54 of those enrollments were for credit recovery, mixed with 35 that were required for graduation. And so sometimes there's a little bit of overlap. So I'm going to work with our guidance team to make sure that we are kind of labeling things a little bit better so we can track that. But together, that would be about 38%. I can say that a large portion, we had 32% of our courses as a blended model. So right now, I have Marcy Graz and Tim Bergs, who are instructors, and they have what we refer to as a blended classroom. So the curriculum comes from online and they are taking the course through Wisconsin eSchool Network, but the students meet face-to-face with the instructor. And so of our numbers, the blended courses seem to be the highest percentage of our enrollments for the first semester.
And are those high school courses?
Those are, yes.
The blended courses. And where do they meet?
Marcy and Tim, they both have online classroom or they have computer-based classrooms where the students come in, yes.
But basically, the content is delivered online, but then they meet with them
Correct.
whatever, whatever the course is to say, okay, these are the things you need help with.
Correct, yes.
This is part of the inverted classroom where content is easily available.
Right.
But then the discussion of how content fits into various areas is the area of conversation in the classroom versus simply sharing those facts.
And Shelley, it's nice is that students are paced so that they can complete the course by the end of the semester, but they are self-paced. So if I understand concept B, I can go quickly through that piece and maybe take a little bit more time on something that I'm a little bit, you know, I'm not grasping right away. And my neighbor can do a flip-flop, but we can both end up at the same point at the end of the semester.
My concern is not, not with the program. Again, I think you've got a tremendous program. And again, it's a great document that you've come out with, is the outside courses that are facing us. And again, I think that's something that we need to look at as a district is how do we, and again, as much as I hate this in education, but that's, this is where we are. How do we market this to the public? Because there are many people, I want my, I don't want to do it in school. We have ways to service our local population through your program in a much richer basis than having them go to another of the many ones that are charters that are popping around the state. And so, I mean, that's, again, that's a discussion for another time. But I'm certainly, again, we have to keep bringing that up again and again and again to say, you know, we have something here that can service you in a much better way. Because we can bring them in, as you said, to talk to psychologists or to work with them in other ways. If they want to, they can participate in our sports teams, you know, if they want to. So there's many ways that we can enrich their experience through our online programs that they can't get necessarily through another outside program in Denver.
And I believe that's the vision of where we want to go.
But we have to build some capacity though, too, to do that. We need more online trained instructors.
Yes.
And we have certain content, subject areas, areas where we don't have that right now. So we've talked a little bit about that, that we need to get more people on board so that we have that capacity to serve our students.
Absolutely.
But that's what we're really good at doing, is building that capacity and building that content. What we're really bad at doing is marketing ourselves and getting this message out. And Doug, you said that we could have the discussion another day. Well, why not have it right now? You've got all the powers to be in the room. That's, that's the delivery area that we always have the problem with, is how do we demonstrate to this community and to everybody involved that we have the capacity to serve you in a different manner than brick and mortar? And, you know, we talk about escalating costs and yet we have kids that are leaving our district to go to some e-school because there's a shiny ball on TV that says, "Come over here and it's, it's better over here." You know, if we, if we instill fear and discontent inside of our buildings, you know, as marketers will do to us and offer a better alternative, that's essentially what they're doing. You know, they're raiding the coffers of students and they're not providing them the same opportunity. They're not even providing close to the opportunity that we can deliver. So while we build that content, we have to build that marketing plan. We have to build that communication system to tell everybody that what we have is the best game in town by far.
I do believe the hybrid or the blended model is the best approach. And we see many students leave for the virtual schools and they're not supported in the way that they need to be and they're not successful. So I would hate to jump into something just for revenue. I know that's important, but we have to make sure that we're providing opportunities for kids where they can be successful too.
Absolutely.
And I just, I've been trying to jump in. Can you just share with the board about the revenue that comes in when we have like Mr. Bergs or Ms. Graz teaching those courses?
So with Odysseyware, we have a per license fee and then we can utilize that license in a variety of ways. So if I, if we utilize license number one, first block, I can have Jimmy in an online course. I can have Suzie in an online course for second block. So we can have multiple students using that one license. With Wisconsin eSchool Network, we do pay a fee. So with any of our local teachers teaching a local student, it's $35 per enrollment. So if I have Johnny and Suzie enrolled in online game design with Mr. Bergs, we're going to pay $70 for the two of them. When we have to use our resources in the network, because right now, we don't have any English teachers. So if we send out a student for English, it costs us $260. But the reverse is also a money maker for us. So right now, for example, we have Kristin Terry, who is a network instructor for Spanish I and Spanish II. And she's bringing in a lot of revenue. Out of the 71 enrollments that we've provided a teacher for, for another district in our network, 61 of those have been for Spanish. So she's really making some money and a profit for us. And what that allows me to do when an enrollment comes through and, oh, we need English III, okay, well, we've got this profit coming in, so now I can send out and go to the network. And if we can get more teachers on board that are network instructors, we can bring in a lot more revenue. I was looking at the data from last year where we had a large surplus. And what I saw was that we, we had an English teacher, and I assume it was Mr. Schlewe, and he was a network instructor. And he had over 30 enrollments that he brought into our district. So 30 times your $260. So that, you know, that helps raise some money for us or at least gives us the ability to send more students out.
Just a side comment. I agree with my colleague, Ms. McNeven, that unless you know how to present to the community the value of what it is you are providing, at the same time at which you are able to deflate the obfuscation of just marketing. So it's all about results. What are the end results that young people come away with from these kinds of experiences? And I am, I am anxious to support the development of a blended model that allows our young people to understand that both online education with face-to-face contact with their teachers and their peers is a viable future, but sitting at home, just working on your computer is much less viable and the results are pretty clear. I'd also like you to guide us to what kinds of incentives we as a board need to provide to more of our teachers to become certified online instructors. Because it seems to me that knowing our teachers, their interests are in reaching every child as possible.
And I know right now, if online is a requirement for a teaching position, we do pay for the cost of the online certification course. But we're balancing that with the scheduling process. And that's going on right now. And so we're, it's like, okay, you know, give me a teacher here because I'll learn English.
Throw him another bone.
So, you know, I have to do some arm wrestling with Mr. Bildston.
Incentive.
And actually, Mr. Goodall is graciously letting us take a look at some of his middle school staff who may be certified high school so that we can maybe grab some resources there. But I fully believe that in order to move forward in the direction that you guys see and that I see as a shared vision, that we, we need to get our teachers on board. And we need to, to kind of take away the misconception that online learning will make teaching, or make teachers unimportant because that is totally not true. It takes a highly effective teacher to reach a kid in the classroom, but it takes more to reach a student who is completely online. So that's where we need to go.
And Annie did reach out to me a couple of weeks ago and would like to follow And Annie did reach out to me a couple of weeks ago, and I'd like to follow up with you, Shelley, and do an article highlighting, you know, the services that we can provide and who we can reach out to.
I think a specific link on the website or an underlink under coursework so that parents could just see easily what courses are available, what courses might be coming in the future, testimonials from students and teachers about the program's success could be the first step toward pre-marketing that we could do.
I think I might utilize some of our staff members next year who would teach me everything and maybe get them on board to help us out and play with some ideas that way. So I know from a couple of parents that I've met, not because their student is, you know, part of online with me, they were surprised, oh, I didn't realize that my child was taking an online class. I didn't know you guys had these options. So I agree with you. We need to get the word out that we are doing a wonderful job. Anything else?
Thank you, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to the portion of the agenda under personnel recommendations. First up is the approval of resignations, of which we have one. That would be the middle school language arts grade A position. Entertaining motion for the acceptance of that resignation.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion by Mirring, seconded by Riley. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to the approval of retirements. As you look through the list of those who are retiring, we've got some very tenured teachers that are very familiar names throughout a lot of our buildings that we're going to be acting on retirements tonight. So I'd like to take an opportunity to thank all of them for their time of service to bearable.
Over a hundred years of service.
Over a hundred years, that's correct. Wow. Entertaining motion for the acceptance of those retirements.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vedro, seconded by Ms. Riley. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. At this point, I'm not aware of any new hires that we have to act upon, however, under D, the approval for postings and based upon some of the action that was previous, a couple lines, I'd like to have Dr. Rizenthaler go through what we'd like to post for in the next week or so.
Yeah, I'd like to request from the board approval to post for the positions that you just acted upon, as well as the academic seminar teacher. And that was the elective course that the board approved. Glenn's been working nonstop on scheduling and staffing, and we've had several meetings to look at how we are utilizing staff. We had, we had thought or anticipated that we might see a reduction in some areas like art and tech ed, but the opposite occurred. We have actually seen an increase from the increase we saw this year, which is, I guess, a good thing because more opportunities are being provided for our students. But we would like permission in the next couple of weeks or more to start posting. A lot of these positions could potentially tie in with some head coaching positions as well, and we want to make sure that we're moving in a timely manner.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vedro, seconded by Mr. Mirring for the approval of postings. Has presented any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So there's a vote. Motion carried. Brings us to E, the approval of the long-term substitute position for the high school science Steve Ford. Entertaining motion for the approval of that.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do you second it?
I'll say no.
All right. Motion by, seconded by Mr. Mortimer. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Brings us to new business, the approval of disbursements. Communication was sent out to the board. Mr. Mortimer, I know you received your copy in writing, I believe, for the disbursements. I'll turn to Chair of Finance for the approval of that.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. McNeven, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us for the second reading of policy. And for that leading of the discussion, I will turn to Chair of Policy, Mr. Carey.
I move to approve the second reading, which we approved first reading at our last meeting, four thirty-one, five twenty-two point one, six sixty-two point one, six seventy-one point one, and six seventy-one point three, as listed in the agenda.
Second. Motion by Mirring, seconded by Vedro. Any further discussion on the second reading? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion and second readings thus carried. Brings us to C, which is the employee health insurance discussion. I'm not sure who we want to take the lead here. We have some decisions to make moving forward, and I think not only does the Personnel Committee need some direction, but the discussion should also start with the Insurance Committee, of which Mr. McNeven is our board representative to. And I don't know if you want.
Well, yeah, I can dig in. Since I get to sit on Personnel and the Insurance Committee and Finance Committee, it's kind of a topic that comes up frequently in my days. The health insurance expenditure for the district is about four point three million dollars with a renewal rate coming in at about an eight percent increase, unless we look at the benefit itself and see what we can do to address those costs. That's what we will incur. You know, Martha gave a brief presentation as to where we stand. Right now, this is one area that we do have some wiggle room if we take a look at some slight modifications. The Health Insurance Committee was created as a member of, as a board member, as well as administrative team and employees that are involved, teachers that can sit down and talk about ways to modify that benefit and let them decide. To me, it really isn't so important as to whether that's an additional co-pay or a higher deductible or additional premium sharing, whatever that may be, or whether you set up a plan design such as an HRA or things like that. There's lots of things that you can do or lots of steps you can do to modify those premium costs and possibly not incur an increase. But I think it's important that the committee at least has an understanding from the board as to what they are shooting for. Because right now, you know, if I'm the recipient of that benefit and you're asking me to discuss that benefit, let's leave it the same. Unfortunately, you know, from a fiscal point of view, I don't think that that's realistic. I think that if we're spending about four point three million dollars, if the board said, look, you know, we want to see if we can stay at that number, and we want to see if we can keep our budget number the same, what can you guys come up with for ideas? I think gives that committee a lot of direction.
Mr. McNeven, I just want to point out, probably should have done it before we got into the discussion, but we do have a couple of board members that have a potential for a conflict of interest in the discussion.
Motion.
Well, at this point, I guess you're here thus far if you just wish to refrain from commenting on it. I think basically what Mr. McNeven wants us to do is give the committee, the board's stamp of approval that, you know, as Sean said, we have an opportunity to try to limit the increase, whether that be to shoot for a zero increase or at least to limit the increase. At some point, this isn't going to be an answer anymore, because at some point, you'll have tweaked your policies to the point that you're going to have some other major decisions to make. But right now, we do have an opportunity to try to affect either a zero increase or a very modest increase through the committee discussions and with the board's direction to try to, you know, our budget was a zero increase. Well, I don't know if that's realistic to do, but I think that's something that we realistically have to target. And the discussion isn't going to happen unless it started with the Insurance Committee, at the Insurance Committee level and ultimately at the Personnel Committee when we sit down and negotiate or when we sit down and have further discussions, I should say. So I didn't mean to chime in. Sean, if you have anything else you'd like to add, we can certainly get direction from the board.
I just would like to add that I think the creation of an Insurance Committee that reaches broadly and widely into the constituent base is the only answer. Those who are most affected by the changes need to be involved in defining what those changes should be. As a board member, I am interested in having recommendations come to the board from the people who are most affected so that we can support what the best practices might be that impact those who are affected the least bit for the most return. I don't feel comfortable in making decisions for other people without their input.
Martha submitted several different models to us some weeks ago. Did we go through the?
Just one model for the fourteen, fifteen year.
Okay.
But it did have a zero percent increase.
Sean, for the sake of moving the discussion forward, for the sake of direction, for you asking the board for direction to minimize with the potential to eliminate an increase in insurance benefits, at least as a starting point, is that, is that something that would be beneficial for you?
Insurance, it's not a decrease in insurance benefit, but it's a decrease in cost, correct?
Well, we're not going to have a decrease in cost. I don't think, that's not a target. But the hope is that through discussions and through tweaking of a number of things that Sean mentioned could potentially affect the premium to minimize the impact. I don't know that I'd go so far as to say that it's not going to affect the insurance because there are those that would differ that it is.
I'm sure it would. Oh, it's definitely going to affect the insurance. Every decision that's going to be, any recommendation that comes forward is going to be affecting the insurance coverage. And I'm just simply stating that the status quo isn't sustainable. So what can be done in the marketplace to maintain the best benefit possible at the costs that we're currently incurring? And Peter's right. You put it to those that are affected and you say, hey, here are some options in the marketplace. Here's what can be done. This is the impact it has. Here's a different option. Here's the impact it has. You know, what is the most palatable? What do you feel comfortable with? You know, some people might feel that, you know, everyone should just chip in a little bit more in premium. Some people might feel that if you're a heavy user of the benefit, that you should pay a little more. You know, there's all kinds of different things. So it's, but the committee does need direction. The committee needs an understanding of what are we doing here? Well, what you're doing here is you're trying to minimize any expenditure increase on this benefit.
Well, and ultimately, it will be this board that decides what action is going to happen. But in putting our money where our mouth is as part of, you know, a collaborative effort, that's what we need to do. We need to have a collaborative discussion about what's going to work best for those that are sitting there discussing the situations. I would, I would motion that the direction to the Insurance Committee is to look at all alternatives as far as options to hold the insurance increase to a zero.
I'd second that.
Any further discussion? Obviously, this isn't a decision-making motion. It's just a direction to.
Well, I would only add to that. The board also has to consider its responsibilities in a variety of areas, all of which unfortunately compete with each other due to the lack of funding that has been provided to public schools, which creates this situation. And that puts the board in a position to arranging debt chairs on the Titanic. It's not a very good position to be in. I would agree with Sean that, you know, we still have a responsibility to make the decision, but as I said, I am uncomfortable in making that decision unilaterally. And so I think reaching as broadly and as widely into our constituency is something we should do. The more people that are around the table, the greater options are created. I don't have an answer, but I do know that if we bring the right people around the table, there are more potential answers available to us.
We also have as a resource on that committee, Dan or Sarah Lewison. So they'll be great resources to help provide the information that the committee requests.
Any further?
Do you have a meeting set up?
No, I was hoping that the board would provide some direction and that we could set up a meeting soon.
Any further comments?
Lots of frequent long meetings would be great, you know.
I'm sure Greg can accommodate you.
Hearing none, I then ask for those that are in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll abstain there, Kevin.
I have an extension from Mr. Mortimer and Mr. Cummings. Thank you for that discussion and leadership. I will thus entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. In favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any more?